Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. Will you please rise and join me in salute and flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to entertain a motion to approve an expense warrant and refunds for 4/8/18 for $1,297.62.
Do you want to do them together?
Yeah, we're going to do them together. And now to approve a correction, excuse me, from 12/19/17 warrant for 4/10/18 for $530 and approving expense warrant for 4/24/18 for $24,311.15.
You have a motion for that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to approve this, a motion to approve the selectmen minutes for 3/20/18 and 4/2/18.
You have a motion to that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledgements and minutes and reports of other departments of the Rec Commission for 3/1/18 and 3/16/18.
I move that we accept the report from the Rec Committee, the reports from the Rec Commission.
All in favor? Aye. And then we have an announcement. Congratulations to our Assistant Assessor Al Jones, who was recently awarded a $500 scholarship from the Worcester County Assessors Association to attend an appraising course in Marlborough in June. So we want to congratulate Al for that.
Good job.
Does anybody else have anything for announcements this evening? No?
No.
All right, we're going to start with the public access. And what we're going to do tonight is we're going to take Danielle Kane first because she has to be at another room. She has to go pick her son up.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is propose, I know you have a very busy agenda, so I don't want to take a lot of time, and I appreciate you hearing me out. The Brookfield Democratic Town Committee had had a discussion earlier in the year about ways that we could promote civic engagement and volunteerism in the town in a nonpartisan, all-inclusive way, just to get good activism going in our town, good engagement, and fill some of the vacancies on our town boards and committees, and maybe make people more aware of the opportunities that exist in some of our town organizations, such as Appleseed or Community Club, and TED, and PTO, and all sorts of scouting, all sorts of opportunities. So what we're proposing is sort of a three-pronged campaign with the working title of Be a Better Citizen. And it would let people know about the organizations in town and the places that they can get involved, make a difference. We feel there's a lot of people out there who might have ideas or things to contribute, but for one reason or another don't have the information or initiative to get involved. So we want to help them make that step. So what we wanted to do was create a booklet we would gather from the town committees, hoping with your help to distribute that, so that we can find out what needs there are in our town, and compile those along with contact information, ways that people can take that step to join a board, or to volunteer at a town event, things like that. And then the second idea was to try to generate some more attendance at our town meeting, and make it more of a social inviting event for people who may have never been to a town meeting before, by having an opportunity for some of these organizations that are looking for volunteers to come and talk about their organization, provide opportunities for people to sign up, to be on their mailing list, or to join a committee. And so we thought having the hour, hour and a half before town meeting as sort of a social time, where people can congregate and learn more about these organizations, maybe have some refreshments, might bring more people into town meeting, as well as fill some seats.
Where would, excuse me, where would you plan on having this little social that you're talking about?
Probably, probably outside the cafeteria. It would have to be, yeah.
I think there's enough room out there, because we really can't have you in, you know, the meeting room, because I could get too congested with people, you know, coming in for the, and if it's a nice day, you could even be outside to do this too.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I know the Boy Scouts are looking for an opportunity to unveil their trails behind elementary school, so, you know, if you think that this is too much for one day, I understand that we can, you know.
Well, you can finish, but it's something we should take into consideration while deciding on it this evening.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
And so, and then the last idea was rolled into those two, to have an ongoing campaign. We would try to encourage people to take a pledge, to commit to maybe 10 hours of community service, or give a donation of $25 over the coming year. So we just have more people who are committed to do something for their town, a huge investment to something, whether it's a cleanup day, or whether it's joining a committee, or whether it's, you know, making a donation to TED, or something like that. And then, you know, we could, we wouldn't keep track of people and their pledges per se, but we could reach out and just give them reminders that, hey, you know, the year is half over, have you done your service, or something like that. Just a way to give people pride in taking part in the community and becoming more involved.
Have you talked to any of the Republican Town Committee?
I would love to include the Republican Town Committee.
Because they should, I mean, I think if you're going to do it, it should be open like to the Republican Committee, and if we, any other political organization here in the community just shouldn't be the Democrats, because everybody should have an equal fair share in this.
I agree, I totally agree, and I would welcome, you know, partners to work on this with us.
You should probably get in touch, I know the Stephen Comtwark is the chairman of the Republican Town Committee, so you should probably get in touch with him also to have a joint ethic.
Right, right. We felt, we felt that we needed to start with the selectmen, to see if we had your support for this, and whether we're going to proceed with the fair or not, and if not, you know, we would look at other ways to continue the campaign, you know, with a longer timeline. If we do the fair at town meeting, then we have a pretty short timeline to get this done. So, so that's why we wanted to come to you first, before we engage too many partners.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
And as I understand it, none of this would actually have any, in essence, branding politically, because it's all local, it's all municipal.
Oh, no, I understand that stuff, but I think that if there's other political organizations here in town, they should be involved too, not just one party.
I didn't say that it shouldn't.
Well, that's how I understood what you said.
So, no, a job fair at town meeting will truly allow us to promote what open positions we have, and get people interested and excited, and that's, for that, that's terrific.
But we'll just take it, I think, under discussion, and we'll discuss some more.
Yeah, I'm all game for a jug for you to test the waters, so that's my position, so.
At this time, I'm not prepared.
Okay.
So, I would, I would just ask Madam Chair, that, you know, if we are going to do something for town meeting, we would need to get a letter and a form out to all the town committees to see if they would be interested in participating, and so I don't want to delay it too much.
Well, we will.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you think that's something we should roll to the next agenda, and perhaps discuss it there?
Yeah, I'll put it on the next agenda. Okay, we'll take the next, do we have some more public access here this evening? Jen, why, come on.
So, my name's Jennifer Ever. I've been resident of Brookfield for more than 34 years. I served in the Air Force. My family's been really big into Brookfield sports and everything else. I know you guys have been CC'd on some emails going back and forth between the Rec Committee. So what it comes down to is them refusing my daughter to play at Brookfield. Quabog Little League voted unanimously twice to allow her to play Coach Pitch softball in Brookfield. The Rec Committee in Brookfield is denying her that right. They're telling her that she needs to go to West Brookfield to play.
I was reading, Jen, about how
I was picturing the environment, by the way, this packet's in there.
That she was, that she was too young to play, so this is what they were telling you?
No, no. The first email I got said that she sits in in kindergarten. Then it was both Coach Pitch teams are fall. Now, each team has seven girls on it, the boys have 12 kids on one team, so a full team, seven is not a full team. I played softball since I was eight years old.
I think the entirety, there's three stacks.
Do you have three of them? Okay, no, that's mine, I'm sorry. Yeah, we each have a pack, okay.
Now, where they get safety issue, I don't know. They're not medical professionals, they have no basis on determining what a safety issue in softball is. If anything, it's a safety issue keeping these six-year-olds that have played T-ball for two years, keeping them down in T-ball. I've seen my daughter hit. I went to my son, who's five years old, his T-ball practice last night, and they can barely throw the ball, they can barely hit the ball. She can nail the ball with somebody pitching to her, she can throw the ball accurately, she's not out there, you know, picking daisies and not paying attention. She's paying attention to the ball, to where the ball is. So if anything, it's a safety issue keeping her down in T-ball. She's a smart girl, they've, now, for years before this, they've always allowed six-year-olds to play on Coach Pitch softball. I have, I have 10 girls alone, and most of them are Rec Committee children who have played on Coach Pitch softball, and not forced to stay down. So their safety, like Quabog Little League already determined it was not a safety issue. She can play up with the, you know, with the seven and eight-year-olds, keeping her down in T-ball with the five and six-year-olds, I mean, the four and five-year-olds, that's a huge age gap for them. So that's more of a safety issue in my eyes. So I'm asking that you guys overrule them, and allow her to play in the town that she lives in, and she's grown up in.
Well, things like this, it's kind of, we really usually, Jen, don't get involved with trying to overrule the Recreation Committee, you know, the Sockment don't get involved with that.
Well, it also puts us at risk when you do something like that.
When we do that, it's a risk, then everybody can come to us and say, oh, well, my child should be playing here, my child should be playing there, and, you know, we're overruling the Rec Commission, and I don't think they'd be too happy. I can hear in example what happened to my grandson last year. He, he played, when he was four and five, he played in a league, soccer league in East Brookfield for two years. And then he was in first grade last fall, and he was six and a half, and he, he was the only one on the team that had ever actually played soccer before. So you know my son, Al Matt. So he tried to get him moved up to the next age bracket, and they said, no, they couldn't let him because of a safety issue. This is what they told him, so we went through the same thing last year with him.
Right, but I believe it's a safety issue keeping her down in T-ball. And Quabog Little League, who is, who governs over Brookfield Recreation, has already determined it's not a safety issue. She can move up to Coach Pitch, but, so now Brookfield is saying, well, she can move up to Coach Pitch, she's just not playing in Brookfield. And now every team that they're going to play is going to have five and six-year-olds on it. Brookfield is going to have six, uh, seven and eight-year-olds.
So, Mr. Snyder, would you like to add something to this conversation?
Yeah, just, yes, I would. As difficult as this conversation is, I spent four years as a player agent, two years as the president of the league. These kinds of things happen fairly, or to me anyway, and that situation happened to me quite routinely. And so with this, where I see, again, we don't have, and I don't believe we have Rec represented this evening, so it's, one, it would be unfair for us to make any decisions without them present, to change prior decisions. What it also does for us is it puts us in a very awkward position, because as I understand it, that Brookfield has allowed or is recommending T-ball for your daughter, essentially by positioning where she's positioned on the team, given, and what I also understand is that there was a waiver offered to allow her to play in the, in the West Brookfield, on a West Brookfield team. By us making a decision to, in fact, allow her to move up within East Brookfield, or overruling the Rec Committee, should anything happen, we would be at risk. The second piece, what it does for you is it also puts you at risk, because with the idea of signing the waiver, you to play on that team, understanding that you're not interested to play in West Brookfield, but if you were to play up in West Brookfield, that also puts you at risk. And so I, I just, again, I find this a very difficult situation. I find that it would be impossible for this board to make a decision to overrule Rec, at least at this juncture anyway. So it's just, again, I'm sorry for the situation, but I think we have to go by what the, what the decisions were.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is they're closer to it, it's not something that we're looking at on a regular basis. I don't know if part of it is also just unbalancing the teams, there could be a lot of other factors that aren't necessarily represented in the traffic we see, so.
Again, it's something we can make a decision.
It's nothing we can really make a decision on tonight. Maybe if we had, you know, maybe for the Rec Commission here to represent the Rep, maybe we could have talked more about this.
He was, yes, he said he wouldn't come, that's why he passed along this package.
Oh, this is why he passed along the whole package, because he wouldn't come. So this is something we really, you know, we're sorry we can't get involved with it, but I mean, it would be going over their heads.
Well, and again, it would put this board at risk.
Yes, it would put us at risk too, going over, you know, going over their heads.
Even though Quabog Little League says that, even though, even the rules of Little League say that five and six-year-olds can play softball.
May play.
Maybe.
So, again, you would hope that they're taking the best interest of the child they have.
Can, can we recommend to them that they maybe do a skills night, where they can see, because I think it's a safety issue keeping them in T-ball.
Quite honestly, I think it would be, speaking of committees that need people on the committee, that committee is too short, and that that would be a decision for the committee to make.
Can we make a mention also, I'm sorry, my name's Christine Hurley, I'm her mother, and I've been very involved in this town. Well, baseball Little League, in that same age group, they have 12 boys on the Coach Pitch team, and one of those boys had one year of T-ball, and he's six years old, and he's in kindergarten. It's, it's not bad.
It's a good generation, but as soon as I brought that up, they brought that little boy down. They knew that he was six years old, they're claiming that they didn't.
Okay.
But, his mother was told at signups, nope, he's six, he's played a year of T-ball, he can move up, absolutely. So they allowed it.
He even went to practice.
He even went to one practice, and then as soon as they saw that in my email, they moved him down.
It's just not fair that what they're doing to this poor little girl who's already had two years of T-ball, and they're saying that it's a safety issue, but yet they're saying it's okay for her to play in another town. This is her town, we pay taxes in this town, she goes to school with these kids, these girls, and she wants to play. And their, their thing is that she's only five, and she's, I mean, she's six and she's in kindergarten. I don't care, she's six, she's played two years, this will give her three years of D-ball. And she's, she's going to end up hurting the little, the little T-ball kids. And I'm sorry, I guess the thing to do is, you guys appoint the Recreation Committee. And what are you here for? You know, if we can't come to you, if there's problems with the Recreation Committee. I think they're unbiased, there's, there's, I don't know why they're doing this.
They allow their own children to play.
We can show pictures.
But when it comes to other kids, they're, they're not allowing them.
All these years, they've been playing, all these kindergarteners have been playing Coach Pitch. All of a sudden, this year, they're not allowing my granddaughter to play. That's not fair. And, but yet, it's okay for her to go play in West Brookfield.
Without your daughter, and I don't know, because I have, I've, I've seen this traffic, and I've seen some of the email traffic, that most of it is what is attached here. Without your daughter, is there balanced teams within the T-ball, or within, like, do they have adequate kids from a standpoint of fielding teams?
From what I saw last night, the only six-year-olds last night have never played T-ball on my, on my team, because I'm coaching my son's team, who's five. So on our team, there's one six-year-old girl, and she's never played before. I don't know about the rest of the.
And if she was to leave T-ball, the numbers are still fine. And she's not going to overcrowd, the, first it was numbers, they were saying there was too many kids.
This is the first I've heard of a safety issue. I have the emails that I've received from Carrie on the Rec Committee, and Jen, they're actually two full CP teams, but then three weeks ago, a little girl was invited to, to join and play. So if you're considering, and Carrie told me personally that they can't deny kids the right to play, even if they sign up after the season started.
Do you want to engage?
And had he called seven, you know, a few weeks ago, there was seven and six on two different teams, a seven, six, but yet the boys have 12 on one team. What, you know, it's not an overcrowding, you know what baseball, I mean, I'm sure you know how many kids you can put on a field. Yes, it's nice to keep the numbers low in that age group, you know.
Yep.
Ball doesn't work in outfield. But what's one more kid, you know, it's.
Yeah, but the unfortunate thing is we're being asked to overrule the decision of that committee without them present, and with that, that puts this board in the town at risk. As difficult as that decision is, or that statement is, it's what it is, and it's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate, especially Brookfield could lose their charter with Little League, because they're going against what Quabog Valley, you know, unanimously voted.
It looks like that they voted on both issues, both that she could move up, but also to make room available within the league, just it wasn't in the town.
Correct.
Yeah, that's actually a Brookfield point, I've been complaining about that first, the first one from Ashley Sturgis.
It's not a numbers problem, that's what I don't understand, even if it was, these are little kids, it's, you know.
So what's, so my understanding is the fundamental difference between T-ball and Coach Pitch is just that on one, it's on the tee, and on the other, the Coach pitches, but, but it's still like, there's no strikeouts, there's.
You're trying, what you're trying to do over that period of time is move them from tees to pitch, and making sure that, again, everybody's safe and playing and enjoying and getting together, the camaraderie, because you really want to grow your numbers.
Right. So, and this would actually move her away from the kids who she's going to school with because of her age.
But it would put her on a skin level as other kids.
Just, we can't, we can't, we can't make that decision.
We can't, we'd have to.
Because it puts the town at risk.
If we could get, if we could get together with the Rec, we talk with them, you know, it's really their decision to make.
Well, and, and again, I would, I would refer it back to the Rec Committee.
Yeah, back to the Rec Committee. We wish we could help, but, you know, we can't, we can't put ourselves at risk, but Mr. Snyder will.
Well, it's, it's not us, it's the town.
It's the town.
Well, when, when it comes time, seeing we're not going to really get anywhere, how would it be in the future when we put something together, and we come to you folks, would you, would you give us your blessing when we hold softball away from Quabog Little League, or, or Brookfield Little League? I want to, I'm thinking that's our next step, because our, our, our girls in this town has not been going very far with the league that they've been in.
So are you chartered Little League?
We are, yes, well, kind of, even though Quabog Little League does not want to pay for our patches. When you're Little League and chartered, you have to wear Little League patches.
No, it's Patch O'Hires.
Oh, it's Patch O'Hires, oh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. But no, I would pull them, years ago, this is what happened, it was the same way. When we go off to junior high, we don't play Little League based softball. We play either ASA, NSA, or, it's now another name, and it's, the rules are totally different. The pitching is different, the stealing, everything, a lot of stuff is different. So I pulled the girls away from Little League softball, and we joined the ASA, that are Minshirons, I remember, Roman, the whole thing, and we became very successful, you know.
Girls were made in school teams. Brookfield girls are not made in school teams.
They haven't, you know, you're lucky there's one, but regardless.
At the junior high, they still live.
Yeah, there's one girl that's made it, I think, this year.
So there's two pieces to this. The first piece is, one, there are two open slots on the Rec Committee, as I understand it, those slots need to be filled. The, the next piece is that this board would in fact entertain, through the Rec Committee, a change in organization if it's going to promote the improvement of league, or leagues.
And if there are two open slots, you said, on the Rec Commission, maybe, the both of you should get in.
How many slots are on that, how many do you, is on there nowadays?
Seven.
There's seven? So there's five members right now?
There was this, it's a nine member.
No, I'm sorry, nine, I got seven.
So if they have a couple of slots open, I advise that the both of you put in that you'd like to be appointed to the Rec Commission.
I do also, I would also be interested just personally in the list of, of kids that have been moved up historically, if you know that, or have that, because I'd kind of like to understand the history a little bit better.
Well, another thing is.
That's something I've been involved in, where I don't have any kids in the school system.
I just want to make, mention it public too, that people are being denied coaching spots in this town as well. You know, people put their paperwork in, then they say it's been missing, or whatever, you put it back in, you need to be queried, you have, you know, it's a good, good amount of paperwork. I put mine in, and I'm not coaching. You know, I heard they needed coaches on T-ball, you know, I asked to do a lot of different things. I know a few others. I know a coach from Tantasca asked to, you know, put her paperwork in. She's a very valuable person to this town, but she's not allowed.
I would recommend you join the board.
I can't, because I don't live in this town.
I think that we do have.
I own property in this town, I pay taxes.
But I'm pretty sure we do have a member that lives in North Brookfield, you can be, if it's appointed, you can, you don't have to.
Oh, that's totally different then, okay.
I don't know if he's still on it, but he was, there was a member from North Brookfield who had lived here, and he lived here in Brookfield, and he moved, and he was appointed, so you should probably check in.
I'll have to check, because I would, um, what was I going to say? Because I would, because if it doesn't go the way, even if, you know, we're outvoted on the Recreation Committee, we're going to take these girls somewhere else. And I would love the blessing from this town, people writing, just get it, you know, that some of the other towns are doing the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more public access? There's one, there's like, there was.
Agenda too, David.
Yeah, no. This is a different subject.
This won't take too long, because you've got quite a bit on tonight.
Well, you didn't limit anybody else tonight, so I don't think you should limit me. I mean, I'm just a resident in town, so don't limit me if you don't limit anyone else. And that's, that's going to be my little topic here, is bring it to you, to this board about our First Amendment, freedom of speech. When, when someone comes up here, me or anyone else, and I speak on things that you don't want to hear, you don't want to hear it, you don't like what I say, you can, and it offends you, that's freedom of speech, we can't limit that. And you try to do that a lot to me when I come up here, okay? I'm a resident, and I'm a citizen in this town, a citizen of the United States. When I come up here, sometimes I'm making suggestions, sometimes I'm criticizing you, sometimes I'm giving you a compliment, but when I come up here, I don't. But when I come up here, I don't want you to limit me and say, you know, you can't say that. In the last, beginning of April, I spoke about some of our town employees, we had a criminal activity going on. I didn't mention names, but it was just a discussion. And you tried to limit, you tried to limit that to me.
Well, absolutely, and I'm going to, I am going to interrupt for just a second.
Okay, well, just hang on.
And I'm going to say, and let me just address that point right now.
No, let me speak, I'm speaking right now. This is my time, okay? You always got to say something when I'm in the middle of speaking. So when I talk about generics...
Dave.
Public, when I'm up here, public access, and I'm not, I'm not...
I don't want voices raised or...
Right. Who's raising their voice?
You.
No, I'm not. Well, I'm trying to overtalk you three, and it's my time to talk. So anyway, getting back to my basis is, when I'm up here, I don't want you to limit me to my time. You didn't limit anyone else tonight. If I have something to say and you're not agreeable with it, just listen, take an advisory, and we'll go on with it like that. But I don't want to be, I don't want to be called out and say, oh, we can't talk about that. That's offensive.
You do come up sometimes, and some of your conversations are very offensive to others, and they know who you're talking about.
That's freedom of speech, Linda. That's freedom of speech. That's our First Amendment, as long as we're not swearing, getting loud, throwing chairs, jumping up and down, that's freedom of speech. You may not want to hear it, but I don't want to see it get lost in our town, okay? That's my point. So please, please just listen when I come up here, take an advisory, but don't try to cut me down when I'm making a point.
Are you done?
Go ahead, this, I'm listening.
Madam Chairman, I've heard the word criminal a couple of weeks ago. I've heard the word criminal again this evening. I think it's totally inappropriate. We ask that Mr. Holcraft meet with the police chief to determine whether or not there was criminal activity reported in this town, that he had any facts related to criminal activity in this town. He provided no facts to the police chief with respect to criminal activity in the town. And further, later on in the agenda, we're going to hear a little bit more about it, I'm sure. But as far as the, we cut Mr. Holcraft off at that time because he was suggesting criminal activity in the town of Brookfield. He was referred to the police chief to explain to him, the chief, that criminal activity. There is no indication of criminal activity by the employees in this town.
And Madam Chair, may I just add on to that, is that it's not a restriction of free speech to adhere to open meeting law, which restricts us from discussing anything that's related to necessarily the character of the employees in the town without them being given an opportunity to know what the information is, and for that to allow them to address it if they choose in executive session. So I think the primary objection there was to Mr. Snyder's point. If it's criminal, it goes to the police chief. If it's not crossing the threshold of criminal, but related to the character of somebody who works for the town, it's not an appropriate topic for open meeting.
Have you told him this before?
Right.
It's open meeting, no one was accused of criminal activity. You guys said I was accusing you of criminal activity, if you remember that. And you said that to me on the telephone to Linda. So if I want to say that, I can say that. That's freedom of speech. I didn't name names, departments, or anything. And going to the police chief is a little premature, and I spoke to him about it, too. We haven't even discussed the situation at hand with town employees. That's a perfect example. If I appear at a public forum, I can say that. I can say, oh, I'm not accusing anyone, and I'm not slandering anyone. I'm talking in general. And that's, we're talking about our town and our problems, then I have that right to say that here in a public forum. That's freedom of speech. And this is what I'm trying to get through you people.
But you can't accuse us of a criminal act.
I did not accuse any of you.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
You accused us of criminal activity going on in this town.
And that's another thing. They haven't put that, they haven't put that meeting on TV, and I'm wondering why. So play that, play that back, and then you can listen to what I said.
Well, we listened to it on YouTube.
Okay, well, I'll have to listen to it again myself, but that's not what I said. And you just said it, we're talking about some employees, not you three. All right, so I made my point. I'll back up, we'll get on the agenda.
All right, we are on the agenda now.
No, it's...
Oh, we were going to, we're going to pass over the advisory boards?
We're going to like, run through some of the other...
We have a joint meeting at this time, and that's...
We're going to do, we're going to do the other items next. Okay, so, Mr. Holcraft are on next.
Who are you doing, number three or two?
You're going to do number three, and then you're on number four, both of you.
Should we skip from one and two?
No, we already had the volunteer, we had that discussion with Ms. Kane. And then the joint meeting with the advisory board is going to be held, we're putting that at the end.
Okay. So, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay. You seem to have a very sticky situation in our town that nobody wants to discuss. And I will discuss it, which I should not be discussing. It should be you three that are being discussing it. Employee, we have a lot of employees, not all of them, but some of them are not working their hours in this town, and they're still getting paid. They're not working, they're not working the hours they're supposed to be working. They're not working their posted hours. I don't care if they're elected, salary, or hourly. They're not working their hours, and they're still getting paid. How do I know this? Because there's a few citizens in town who've been watching who's coming, who's going, and some people are coming in, checking. And these people are not getting, are not here working. So you don't want to be, you don't want to make them be accountable to the employees. That would be, that's your job, Linda.
They are filling out, Dave, they are filling out their time sheets with these hours in their signing tool, in their sign, that these are the hours that they have worked.
Yeah, no, I don't agree with that. Because I'm watching the warrants, and these people...
How are you watching the warrants?
They're right there, it's public information, Linda. I know you're trying to keep everything under wraps now.
What warrants are you coming in and you're looking at?
The ledgers, the warrants. Public information, Linda. So let's not get, let's not get off onto that track. Bottom line is, what I just said, is it's common knowledge of what's going on again. And that's, did the treasurer quit this week, or what?
We can't say anything.
Okay. Well, that was, that whole bullock, we had two, three weeks in this town hall, is related to people not doing their jobs. They're not coming in, they're not working their hours, and they're getting paid. And if, and I say they're falsifying their time sheets, and now that's criminal.
No, that's a felony.
That's a felony.
And it's happening in this town.
And we have no record of anyone doing this, so therefore, we could...
Yeah, because it's all undercurrent, and nobody wants to talk about it. Well, I'm talking about it, because I'm a taxpayer in this town.
Dave, I look through those payroll sheets very carefully every week. And I'm sure the, I always do, you can ask. And I look, and if I see, feel that somebody hasn't worked their appropriate hours or something, I always look at to that department, I'll ask them a question.
Okay, well, I'm going to say it again. You have certain town employees in here, they're falsifying their time sheets, and this has been going on for a long time. And everybody in this town hall knows what's going on. And that's not, it's not just in the town hall, it's other departments, too. And nobody wants to get time clocks in this town, and that's one of the reasons. And you, and you three don't want to make, be accountable to what's going on.
Mr. Holcraft, that's an initiative petition. Go find your eleven friends and have them sign it, put time clocks on them.
No, I don't have to do it. This is what I need when I come up here, to you three. You three are governing the town. You should, you should be looking into this, and you should be making people accountable for what's going on in our town. Our finances in this town are so screwed up. We're two years behind, when we have a meeting...
Two years, we're about four years to get it straight.
Yeah, well, we should work on what's current right now, so we can get, have our town meeting.
You can't, you can't...
We get our free cash certified.
Madam Chairman.
The town, we've had, our finances have been so screwed up.
But you can't, Dave, you can't, you can't hop up and straighten out one year without going back to the previous years.
I'm talking about the last two years.
But that doesn't have anything to do with it. It's, we've had some problems for about four years now. You have to solve the problems back then before we can, we just can't go into, say, 2018 and solve those problems and go on. You have to settle the problems from before.
Linda, I was on the finance board, I know, I know what's going on. And I'm talking about the last two years now, we're trying to get free cash certified. When was, when's our town meeting going to be, July? Maybe August?
September, maybe.
Yeah.
So work is not getting done.
Madam Chairman, we have nothing to work with. We don't have a report of employees that have inappropriate signs. We have indications from a citizen that people aren't working their hours, yet it's all insinuation, it's nothing. We have no facts.
I'm bringing, this is the beginning process, is what I've got to tell you. And once again, Clarence, you want to look the other way.
Have you seen these payroll sheets? Can you prove to us and bring them in here and tell us if these people aren't working these appropriate hours, that they're supposed to be working?
I could, yes, I could do that in some cases, yes. When I was on the finance board...
So next time this...
But I don't want to hear when you were on the finance board.
Yeah, but you know what, Linda and Clarence? You three are supposed to be accountable, make these people accountable to what's going on. And you don't do it.
I can't act on something I don't have. I see, it's nothing here, David. You don't provide names. I offered you an initiative petition where you can direct this board to do something, if the town agrees. And you've refused that. So we have nothing. It's time to move on.
Yeah, it's time to move on, Dave.
This is, this is what happens here. Every time you have a problem here, Clarence, you look the other way.
Absolutely.
That's correct. You're not, you haven't, you don't want to solve problems in town. You're providing that town, and you're causing more problems.
That's ridiculous. That's...
This topic is...
I know, you don't want to, it's too much truth, and you don't want to hear it.
It's ended, let's go on to your next one.
What's your next one?
Okay, what do you think? I'm not going to let, that's not going to slide, what we just discussed.
Here's one.
What's our, what's our policy on town vehicles?
Okay, I will give you a copy. We have one here for you. And it's a... That's it.
So what are we spending time on this for?
Well, I'll get to that in a minute, Clarence, just be patient.
He wants to know what the town policy is.
Be patient, Clarence. I know you'll look the other way, anyway.
We don't need the comments, David.
Well, I have that right, I'm speaking right now.
It almost seems as though we're, and, you know, you make out that I'm like the principal in the school, and you're the student. We have to correct you for everything you do.
No, I don't think so. You, I speak, I speak it the way it is. You're not used to that.
In your world.
Thank you.
In your world.
I was really glad.
Yeah, that's the problem with that town.
It's almost like a comedy show.
I don't know how we've survived so, I don't know how we've survived so many years.
I know. Oh, speaking of that, because he's still reading. We are going to celebrate the 300th town meeting on December 18th. We need to figure out how to do that.
We'll have to get together, and we'll discuss that in the meeting.
Yeah, we need to get to that on the agenda.
Okay. Karen?
I'm writing it down.
Okay, Karen's writing it down.
This is, this is the policy?
This was a policy that was made in August 20th, 2002.
Okay, so can...
And there, this is the only policy that we have.
All right, so before I, before I get to the punch of this, what, so if someone has a town vehicle in this town, one of these three, can they, they can take it and go out of town, anywhere they want, shopping for their own person, go anywhere they want, all hours of the day?
No, it tells you, it tells you right here what they can, they're allowed to take these vehicles home, and they can take it out of, out of the town if they are going out on town business.
I agree, I agree with that a hundred percent. But how, how much out of town? When their own person is shopping, going into other towns all the hours of the night, when there's no means going on?
So Madam Chairman, so we'll cut this one off as well. That if there's a report of a vehicle leaving town that is reported to us, we can take an action. Hearsay is hearsay.
Yes, Dave, time.
Yeah, if you can give us something in writing, if somebody's keeping a record, say if somebody's using the vehicle to go do their grocery shopping, and if they were caught there, record it, the date and the time.
Okay.
This is what you have to do, we want to see something.
Since everybody carries a camera in their pocket these days, I think that...
Okay, yeah.
Very difficult.
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, so this policy here doesn't really, doesn't really hit on, just, they're supposed to use the vehicle for town business, town meetings, and back and forth?
This is the policy.
Okay.
He asked for policy, he has a policy, he has no information for us?
No information.
I'd say this agenda topic is done.
Well, if you, I asked what the policy was, I have this now.
You have it now.
Okay, so when I get more, then I will be back with you, because we have a certain vehicle...
We expect it.
Yes. We have a certain vehicle that goes all over different towns at all hours of the night, so...
I would hope.
And this is what, this is what I wanted to find out first, before I go further.
We can't wait till you explain to us who this individual is.
So you can do nothing, Clarence, anyway. You do nothing. You're just a figurehead. Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Chief Blanchard, he has some police appointments.
Good evening.
Our appointments, what's, yeah, I saw them. Okay.
I'd like to bring forward neither of these gentlemen that got here tonight, ones working, who had a prior commitment, but Dan Driscoll and Joel Wilson to the appointment of Reserve Police Officer with the town of Brookfield. Joel had worked as a reserve officer, probably resigned about two years ago, concentrated on his school. He wishes to come back, rejoin the police department. He's currently a sergeant at the Worcester County House of Corrections. He's in the special services unit at the House of Corrections, which does investigations inside and outside of the jail. He is also a member of the SEMLAC SWAT team, which is a central Massachusetts law enforcement council SWAT team. So he goes out and he serves high-risk warrants with other members of the Worcester County SWAT team. Dan, I'm sure you guys all know Dan. Dan has worked on the ambulance crew since probably 2008, on the fire department since 2009. And he's just recently graduated the Reserve and the Mid Academy, and has like, left the gate, has put into law enforcement as well. And he's a North Brookfield resident, he's come in a lot of time in this town. I believe he's on the highway department as well right now. So I'd like to bring forward both those names for consideration for appointment. It was starting out at sixteen dollars an hour.
Okay, do I have a motion?
You have a motion to that effect.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, thank you, Mike, and then maybe you can get them both up to a meeting, so that we can meet them.
Sure, absolutely.
How does that, how does that position us overall from a standpoint of your reserve officer?
I knew you were going to ask, and I was trying to think how many we had. I think it brings us up to nine or ten possibly. And then, there's a few other people. The Central Mass Chief of Police Association Academy, Interminion Reserve Academy just graduated today. So it's going to be a couple of other people that I'm entertaining on putting on. But I don't want to put on too many at a time to train, I just don't think we'll be able to. It won't be fair to anybody.
No, and we don't want to burn out your training officers.
Right, right, and I think the officer getting trained might not get the best training either, if there's so many people, so, but I will probably bring them. So I'd like to keep it around, you know, plus ten, you know, a little bit more than ten. You know, so we're getting there, so. I think that's all I have, unless you guys have anything?
Okay.
No, keep going, Mike.
Keep going, thank you.
All right, I appreciate it.
One thing. The rate, it's not, it's a practice track supposedly, down on Quab, five Quabog, and the traffic is heavily increased on the weekends. It's, it's unbelievable down there. It's one car after another, they're coming in from all different states. So I was wondering maybe who could get, you know, more offices down there patrolling.
Absolutely. Is there a timeframe when they're coming and going, or is it just...
Well, they're coming, we, we follow vehicles going in one morning at 8:00 in the morning, and they're not supposed to be starting till 10:00 down there, and they have that down there till dusk and even later. So I mean, there's just so much traffic out there. If you could get down, and then also they throw out their trash all over the place and everything. You never even know Quabog Street. I know, you can't do that.
We'll certainly, we'll certainly monitor, but I mean, that seems to be a huge issue everywhere down.
But if you could get the offices down there, you know, do some duty on the street, I appreciate that very much. Okay.
It would be a problem.
Yeah, speaking of that, back to when we were doing the cleanup the other day. I was at White's Landing, Quabog to White's Landing, and the environmental police went by, Mike, when we were picking up trash, and we went, and the next thing I know is the, the sound level was eliminated. So I'm wondering if they weren't down there checking?
I don't know.
Could you make a call and just see what they found, if they found something? Because he drove back by, and then all of a sudden, the noise was back.
Would you also do me, do me a favor, and Shrewsbury is looking at a AL, the ISO-certified sound test for local ordinance. Would you reach out to them and find out what their plans are for execution and enforcement?
Sure, what do they, what do they use it for?
Uh, they're, I, I'm not certain what, what drove them to go ahead and look at instituting it, but it's a, it's a test that's similar, but a little more rigorous than the one that's currently used under Mass general law.
Do you know what department's using that, or is it...
I know, I know, I know Shrewsbury is, is looking, I know the town's looking at adopting it. I was going to try to reach out to their city council. I think they're a city council versus select.
Yeah.
I'm not certain.
I don't know.
No, they're a town manager.
They are a town manager, yeah.
All right, we can reach out to the town manager, that's our plan.
Yeah.
Go from there.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
All right, Mike, thank you for coming in.
Good night.
Okay, me, too.